...meeting for December 20th, 2016. We'll start opening the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Well, good evening, everyone. We're going to start off with appointment schedules. We need to appoint a number of people. We're going to start off with Tom Quinlan and the Ad Hoc Driveway Regulation Committee. I think I'll just -- you want to list them all, John?
Do you want me to?
Yeah, why not? Read them all down and we'll just make one motion.
Okay. Tom Quinlan to Ad Hoc Driveway Regulations Committee. Election officers for 2007 as follows. Virginia Ahart, Ruth Bernier, Barbara O'Rigley, Alice Brewer, Monica LeBrie, Florence Collins, Debra Pinsky, Virginia Huntley, Eileen Kuchar, Theresa Goral, Anne Giroux, Kristen Canton, Jody Corey, Anne Sheptelain, and Eileen Hamel.
Do I hear a motion to appoint all these individuals?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved unanimous. Next issue is public hearings. We have no public hearings. The next time is open to the public. I'd like to say something to the public first. I want to commend our fire department and our police department for the actions they've taken on the house fire on East Street. I was there during their activity. I found them to be very professional and organized. It was very -- good to see. Very nice. And Bob?
Thank you. Robert Floyd, private citizen, 15 East Street. I heard through the course of 17 years, people coming up on the microphone, addressing you and thanking the police department, fire department, and, you know, it sounds nice and good for them and great, but when it happens to you, I can't say enough. It's like out of a movie. Chief Goyette, chief workman, their crews, the continuous contact that helped. I had the gallery 46 second walk away, so there was at least I wasn't sitting in back of someone's truck. But the information, even Jeremy, I believe, the dispatcher, he said, "You might want to get out of the house." I would have waited till the smoke came in. You might want to call your insurance company. Be afraid of -- not afraid, but be concerned when people call that are phony insurance. I had three of them today. But they worked hard. They were picture perfect. I can't say enough. So I always had respect and I observed from afar, but when you're that close and you see what they're doing, they took command. It was brilliant. Again, it was right out of a movie. It was amazing. So I thank them. I certainly thank the other towns and we're thrilled. We're alive and life goes on. I feel renewed, sort of a reset button. Not that it's the best thing that ever happened to me, but we're fine. We're fine.
Good to hear, Bob.
Glad to hear that.
And the people, the town officials, what support. Amazing. Like a continuous Christmas. Although somebody had a song playing somewhere and all day long, it's "Blue Christmas" by Elvis Presley, so hopefully that gets out of my head.
Gets out of your head.
Thank you.
Any comments, thoughts? Okay, well, it's still open time to the public.
Hi. Dan Pellegrini, Crookledge Road. I'm not going to be able to stay for the snow plowing discussion because my son's got a basketball game, so I'm going to go see that. But I do have some stuff that I'd like to leave with you guys and some thoughts on that. One thing in particular, this is a town of Upton, Mass. They had the same thing and this is a legal opinion review. So it even talks about how the ballot has to look, what it should look like, what your authority is. And one section I do want to call out in particular that you guys take a look at is in the back here. It actually talks about if town officials are aware that this is going on and authorize and continue what the penalties are related to that. So again, I'm not trying to be bah humbug and not for the town, but I live on a road that is unmaintained or non-updated and then I see as plowing where our responsibilities aren't. So I really am just asking that the town cut expenditures where we don't have to do them and reel it in. Because again, the other thing I noticed is a two and a half percent tax increase as well as adjustment in my property value. So again, I've lived in this town for 10 years and gone from a mill rate of 11% to almost 17%, 16 and change. And it continues to go up and that's all I ask is not only do we look for where we can continue to spend the money, but look for where we can cut. And plowing public roads is against -- or private roads is against the law. I brought it to the board in May and we've decided not to do anything. And then personally, like you guys know, I've got roads I have to plow and maintain that are mine. I had to spend $20,000 last week on a new truck, or huge truck, because mine blew up. So again, I'm feeling that pain, but I think these are good guidelines for you guys as far as other towns that have gone through it. And then these are also, I didn't take my practice report. I hope that you could, Charlie.
Would you do me a favor, Dan? Would you give it to Bob so he can give it to all of us? Because when everything gets on my desk.
Those are the reviews of the town about then. These are the two general laws of plowing. Again, and as we discussed via email, Charlie, the last time, I think it's great that you guys are going to bring it to the town in May, but I think something needs to be addressed now because not only are we spending the money, but I don't know if we looked into our insurance because I can almost guarantee you that that would be an exclusion from our insurance.
So you know, it appears the direction we're going and we haven't voted to set the warrant article, but the idea is to take and put it in town meeting in January so that we get basically a straw vote as to where the town wants to go with this. If we see a negative attitude across the board, then it's a foregone conclusion. We've got to do something right away. If we see that the townspeople want to give us the authorization to move this forward, then it's going to go to ballot question in May.
Understand, but my concern as a citizen in bringing this up in May is it should stop now. There's actually, you guys are liable to $1,000 a year in jail for allowing this to happen. And, you know, there is no reason for us to go from May and not do anything until next year and allow it to happen all winter. I mean, we should have sent notice to these residents or we should have brought this up earlier and made adjustments. And I'm concerned that, you know, the law even states that there has to be 20% of the town there or 200 people. And it talks about having to be open and all that. And I'm concerned that we do a straw man vote in January, which leaves the whole month of December to continue plow, January to continue plow, and if you get favorable there, we're going to continue through the year. I mean, it's major. Have we checked our insurance?
That would be something that Bob would be going into.
So just put this in there. God forbid, a child playing there, it happens, read the news, they get hit by a plow, we're done. Our insurance will not cover it and we're struggling for money. So that's why, you know, not, put the cost aside. And the other thing we're losing is by not accepting these private roads, we're losing all state funds. So we're spending our money to plow these roads and we're not even collecting Chapter 90, our state funds. So every time you buy gas, you pay tax, that goes to the municipalities to pay for the roads. These private roads are not eligible for those. So I think what we should be doing is pushing these to be public roads and plowing them and taking the state money. But we can't be doing neither because we're losing our state money and we're paying money out of our pocket and we're putting our town in a liable situation. So that's, as a concerned citizen, all around, I think this is a serious matter that can't be brushed under the carpet. And I've been asking and patiently coming back. So I'll speak my piece. I know you guys have it on the agenda later, but there's a lot of good information there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, will you recognize by the chair?
Thank you. Robert Floyd, 15 East Street. Three people approached me in one week. Somebody who sits in the middle needs to pull their mic in closer. They're not picking you up as strongly on TV. And one person, I never knew who he was, came up to me and I don't know why he even approached me, but I'm done.
You're done?
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a good thing Bob and I are friends.
Marla Hank, Gilbert Road, and more specifically Conservation Commission. For the last several months, the Conservation Commission with the Fletchers and the Water Commission have gone over the license for the Zipta farm. And we came up with what we thought was a satisfactory document for us. Nevertheless, I'll attribute it to my newness in the position. We neglected to pass it on to the Select Board in enough time for you to review it to vote at this meeting. And since the current license expires at the end of this year, and they certainly do have access to that property to do things, it's ongoing, we would ask if there is something you can do. Fully understanding, you need to review the wording and if anything, make it better. You know, we think it's good, but I am also not a farmer or a lawyer. So I would ask, since it's not on your agenda for this evening and you're not having any more meetings this year to my knowledge, but December 31st is still in 11 days, what can we do?
I received their contract this past Saturday, which is way beyond time to post it for a meeting tonight. But given the circumstance, I wouldn't mind entertaining a motion to continue the current contract for three months to give us time to review the new contract. If I hear a motion?
Let's get it to the question area, so I'll make a motion to -- somebody want to make a second so we can talk about it?
A second.
Okay. Can we legally do that on the lease?
I don't know because no one's read.
Well, my experience and I do a lot of leasing and contracts for the state and we do extensions all the time based on the fact that there's not time to renegotiate. But it's got to be for a finite point of time and we have to work on it to ensure that we're not going to keep continuing it. So, you know, 60 to 90 days, I think, is perfectly okay. But I have some other questions with it too that we need to talk about. So the motion to extend it for 90 days, I made the motion, I'm fine with that, just to get us into a term where we can start talking about issues if there's any.
Well, I mean, the contract landed on my desk Saturday.
Yep.
And I believe I emailed it to the board, but in all honesty, no one's had time to even read it. We, myself and Bob, had been working on the town warrant articles for a special town meeting.
Yeah, so 90 days will give us time.
It'll give us time.
Yep.
You know?
I agree.
All in favor?
Any other questions? No?
No, I have no questions. I agree with you. I think that's perfectly, I think, in line to do that. So I would vote yes on that.
I'm okay.
Yes, sounds good.
So it's unanimous, we'll continue the contract for three months, give us time to review and go from there.
Would there be any need or desire to have the Conservation Commission and/or Water Commission in on some of the discussions so we're all coming?
Too early at this point.
Oh, I didn't mean today.
And I didn't mean today either. What I meant was is we haven't even opened that up to review it.
Right.
So until we review it and have a few minutes to sort of say, "Okay, do we have any questions? Where do we need to go?" I'd say, you know, would I like to see a joint meeting between the Water Department, Conservation and Board of Selectmen?
That's all I'm looking for is.
Yes. The short answer is yes.
That's actually.
But that would be after January's town meeting.
I guess I'd ask the Fletchers.
That's what we have to do. I'd also like to know that you're going to have that meeting because we've had these meetings before where I've been just not invited to the meeting or not let known about the meeting and stuff starts getting discussed and people know the answers to it. And I'd like to be part of the meeting.
I totally agree with you. You should be part of the meeting. You are the party to this.
Yeah. Should be in an open meeting.
I don't see why not. It's basically a lease extension relative to this.
Yeah.
You know, I don't have a problem with that. I just, I just can't look at something that drops on my desk on Saturday and then Tuesday night, where I'm going to be telling you guys, "Well, I think we should do X, Y, and Z."
Well, again, there wasn't enough time to put it on the agenda, so we couldn't do that anyways.
Yeah. So, and we're sort of stretching this in open meeting time here just to make it happen, so.
Nope, that's, I just wanted to make sure they had access to the property. Thank you.
They have access to the property. May I ask a question?
Of me?
Actually, Mr. Fletcher.
Yes.
Do you have a use or interest in that barn?
Yes.
Okay. Because that's not, I peruse through the contract and that's not even spelled out. It might be tightly then court that into a two.
It's been.
You want to bring him to the podium?
It's kind of been.
You want to come to the podium? I'm sorry, but.
Bob Fletcher, 22 Gun Road. The barn has been on the table on several occasions. We didn't express any interest in using the inside of the barn until Mr. Seraphin did the work in there. And he changed around some stuff inside the barn, so it's actually easier for us to get a small machine in there to clean if we did put animals in it. It's accessible to do that now, which it wasn't before. And we'd spoken to Conservation Commission about the pile of debris that was left over from the construction project and seeing if we can't do something to help the commission to get rid of the debris that was in there as kind of part of the deal that we have with the town.
Is there water there?
There is water. The Water Department has turned it off at the gate valve underground because the water pipe did rupture a number of years ago and Joe Slattery went in and turned it off.
There is.
There is water there.
Okay. All right, so another point about the contract, it doesn't really address that at all.
And it was.
And if you're looking at a 10-year lease, maybe this is the time to look at that too.
Yep.
Okay, that's all. I would just, you know. Thank you. Anyone else open time? George?
About this time.
You sure?
Well, just one thing. Merry Christmas to everyone.
Merry Christmas, George.
Charlie, I don't know if Dan knows yet that it was omitted by accident.
It was posted by me, which was the legal posting.
I don't know if you want to talk about it in open time to go any further with that or you want to get the information and digest it, but I just, it was supposed to be on there.
He sent me an email saying it wasn't on there. I went, "What?" And then I got into the town system, put it in there.
Laptop not working.
And my suspicion is when the clerk printed this, she printed the older version. She didn't print what was actually posted.
No, I appreciate it.
No. I'm listening, Dan. I mean, it just, you know.
That's okay. Something's got to be done.
It's on the list. I'm not getting anywhere with East Street Bridge.
Well, there you go. Maybe we can get somewhere and have a nice win.
When I heard that we got the, that the town got a grant on the dam, my first thought was the grant for the bridge.
Did we get a grant to tear the dam down?
They, we didn't. The owner got a grant to tear down the dam by the old tin shop.
Wow.
And we got a grant to hire a part-time conservation agent.
But we didn't get a grant?
We didn't get a grant for that, no.
But do we still have money for the road? Are we giving more roads still?
The plan is do the bridge before you do the road, because if we do the road before we do the bridge, then we've got a bottleneck.
Do we lose those funds for that road though?
They've never been allocated. So anyways, we're getting off topic here.
No, but that bridge definitely doesn't.
Yeah, yeah. Select Board updates? Any liaison reports?
Well, I did.
Microphone?
Sorry.
If I'm going to catch it, you are too.
I had a hard time getting ahold of Zoni Board, Nilda, but I did talk to Virginia Ahart and she's here and she wants to speak, so.
It's something else. It's not.
Oh, okay.
It's not community preservation.
Right. So I didn't, I don't have any information about community preservation this evening.
There's nothing new.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Mr. LeBrie?
Well, I talked to the fire chief and I think after the first of the year, we've got to sit down and go over what kind of capital equipment he's going to need. And there's a couple of different ways to go on that, so we'll narrow that down at the beginning of the year.
Mr. Martin?
No meeting since last, last one?
Things are slow. Yeah. All right, here we go. Town administrators report.
Nothing new. Actually, you have.
Nothing's happened.
You have hot off the press, first draft of the special town meeting warrant for January 24th. As you can see, there are currently 24 articles. We, so there's anything that will be provided by the selectmen, at this point, we passed the cutoff for submission of articles. And this is what we have. I mean, basically, we're distributing free cash according to the town's policy and we are utilizing, I guess, most of the free cash for a variety of one-time expenditures. At the very bottom, and I haven't had a chance to review with the Water Department, there are three articles having to do with Water Department issues, a land purchase, replacement of water mains, and other improvements to the water system. So I just thought I would give this to you tonight so that you can look it over. We have a meeting scheduled for January 5th to review the articles and presumably you'll execute the warrant at that point. So if you have any suggestions, if there's anything in error here, I did the best I could to give you a summary of each article. This is not what we'll post. I mean, we are legally bound to post so-called clean warrant with the articles only, but I'm thinking that this would be the document we'd pass out at the town meeting, which would have the motions as well as a brief explanation of each article.
Could you make sure our finance committee gets a copy of this?
I will make sure, yeah. I thought, I told them, actually had a conversation this afternoon. I said, "As soon as I give it to the selectmen tonight, we'll get copies around tomorrow to..." I'm meeting with the department heads tomorrow and we'll get copies to the finance committee as well. We did have a brief delay because of snow last week. I found that I needed to do some updating of phone numbers and try and work a little bit on our system. In the future, we have our phone system and it's going to be actually a text message to department heads. I have up-to-date cellphone numbers for the department heads. And in addition to that, I've spoken to Art about sending him a message, which he will post on the website about any decisions that are made for closing or delay. And we're going to get Channel 22 and 40 to add the town to their crawl that goes under the screen when other towns post. So just hope we don't have any more snow this year, so we'll be okay.
I'll take care of that.
I did also update the MOU, which the police department has, or the police union has. Gave it to Mr. Bob Dixon and Ed Moskell, who represent the union. And we anticipate, we don't have a vote at this point, but we anticipate a vote very soon. And I think we're, you know, hopeful, I'm hopeful that we're there with this. Vehicle list has been updated for general insurance purposes, so we're not insuring any vehicles that we no longer use or are sitting in the junkyard someplace. The alcohol licenses are ready for the board tonight. I'm happy to report that all licensees have submitted the documents that are required and a check. So we're ready to go with those. And lastly, I did speak to the governor's assistant, Scott Ahern, regarding the so-called governor's bill that will rectify the issue that we had regarding the work that was done at the Zipta barn. Did I pronounce that correctly? Zipta Barn. The doors, so, yeah.
Now, we don't need any additional funding on that, correct?
We do not. Actually, I was informed, and I guess you were as well, that there's some remaining CPC funds that we can allocate, so. Actually, there was an allocation of CPC funds for this purpose that were not used. And so now we can simply use those. We don't have to put anything on the warrant for January.
Good.
In terms of upcoming activities, I have a department head meeting tomorrow. And you know about January 5th, when the selectmen will review the warrant and execute the warrant. We have a special town meeting on the 24th. And tonight, I'm asking, can we schedule January selectmen meetings besides January 5th? Are we able to do that?
Yeah, what's the 10th, I guess it is? I didn't bring my calendar with me.
Okay.
But it's the following Tuesday. Then we'll skip a Tuesday and then it'll be the following Tuesday after that.
Okay. Well, then we would, we would meet on the 5th and then it'd be the 10th?
The 10th and then we're going to town.
And then the 24th?
Which is town meeting.
Yeah, the 24th. So when there's a town meeting, you just consider that as a selectmen's meeting and skip it?
Yeah.
Do you post a selectmen's meeting?
My personal preference is we do, only because if we have to meet before the.
That's what I'm saying. You do have a meeting before and post meeting.
Right.
Okay.
So the 5th, the 10th, and the 24th is the town meeting? Yeah. Got it?
Yes.
Probably not going to want to hear this, but I won't be here the 5th. I'm not a state. That's okay. I mean, I don't mind.
Can I do? I mean, you know.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I only leave in the summertime.
Because you go north.
Yeah, I'm going north in the summertime. You guys all go south in the winter.
So the 10th and the 24th are already scheduled.
So that concludes the report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Department boards, committees, anybody?
There she is.
Virginia Ahart, Fulmer Road, a member of the Bylaw Review Committee. This is the hat I'm wearing tonight. I have several. Over a year ago, your board was asked to create a committee, a short-term committee with the, just the job of reviewing our bylaws. And the members of that board were named by you. So let me first tell you, it's myself, Margaret Larson, Francine Tishman, and now Velda Goldberg has joined us. Now, the first thing I want to make clear is that the recent report that Bernard Lynch gave on the restructuring of the government of Southampton cites the need for a review of the bylaws to make them more user-friendly. But our review was underway long before he even began his study. In no way should our review be looked at upon as a way to take away or add restrictions. In our review, we were asked to perhaps reorganize by grouping together separate bylaws concerning the same topic, to clarify, to make more concise, note outdated bylaws, and perhaps areas of omission, which then could be worked on at a later date by other people. In addition, as we began our work, it was clear that there needed to be a lot of updating. Let me give you some examples. The current bylaws are listed numerically in the order they were accepted, not topics. You want to find out about dogs? You read all 30-some bylaws to make sure you didn't miss one. There's ambiguous wording. There's coasting. We cannot coast on the streets of this town, okay? Nobody seems to know what that refers to. In fact, I asked our police chief and I asked our second-in-command and they had no idea what they were supposed to be stopping. and they had no idea what they were supposed to be stopping. If anyone in the bylaws on, the bylaw on unlicensed cars on a lot, if anyone sees a nuisance car and what it is doing, if they would please tell us so we can work on it. But nuisances are listed. Tell me what a nuisance car is. Some of them are overly wordy. Some of them are so short, you're not really sure what's in it. Some of them are outdated wording and stuff. I mean, maybe it's all right to keep a bylaw that says you don't throw your wood ashes on your sidewalk, unless it's in a snowstorm. How many of us have wood ashes? And how many of us have sidewalks in town? Okay. They can, they may contain parts that at one time were really important, but now only confuse newcomers. For example, when we moved from three to five select board members, it was necessary to explain how those additional two would be added in the voting, so that you have, again, a complete rotation, or an almost complete rotation with three-year terms. Somebody new in town who does not have the history would wonder, what is this talking about with the elections? Sometimes, state regulations could and should be noted if there's a state regulation that is pertinent. But we need to make sure it's listed for accuracy. Today, I was checking on kennel regulations. Judith Conlin, who runs the only commercial dog kennel in town, is going to review their kennel bylaw. And she said, we have no regulations in the state of Massachusetts. Yet two regulations were in the bylaw, quoted in the bylaw. Well, the first regulation, when I checked it out at the state website, I don't remember, section 40, I think, or article 40, section 137A? Article 40 doesn't have a section 137A, okay? The other regulation simply took you to a list of definitions, including dangerous dogs, dogs at large. Nothing particular about a kennel. By the way, Judith wishes that the state did have some kind of regulation for kennels. We also noticed over and over the fee structure. Fees were mentioned. And we recently voted for a fee structure. That probably would be better to be, go back and referenced it. To accomplish our tasks, we had been checking with proper town officials and others who might have an interest in certain bylaws. And we have invited some of them to meet with us. In fact, we, of course, have open meetings. Anyone can come. We've invited people to make comments. But we've also been checking with other similar nearby cities and towns on their bylaws. Interesting. We don't have any bylaw about dangerous cats. But make sure you don't own a dangerous cat in Westfield. So, okay, before any reorganization or changes are to be made, we plan on presenting to you a redlined version of the existing document, so the proposed changes and whatever suggestions, wording and things, are made very, very clear. Now, it would be good to know that you are in agreement with this approach. So it kind of would be nice to, for the select board to say, yeah, this sounds like a good approach. If you don't like it, you can tell us. Do you have any questions or comments?
Well, I personally know that our numerical system of adoption of regulations does not lend itself to any user-friendly approach to anything. And that's being polite. I understand that there's going to be a lot of work involved just to get this into proper definition. The other part to it of redlining these things and putting them together in a Word document so that people can look at that and review it is, in my mind, the way to go.
Yeah.
It'll allow a lot of people to be able to take and see this at the same time and move this forward. It's well past due. And if you look at what's going to be coming at the next town meeting, there's going to be more bylaws. So it just keeps adding to itself. So, yeah, I think where you're going is correct in my mind, but I don't know how the board feels about that.
No, I was gonna ask, as long as it's in an electronic format, we can use it, we can re-edit it? I hate to get a lot of paper with red lines.
Oh, yeah.
It's a lot of paper with red lines. And yes, that would give you a chance to go through and see, put your thoughts down, and give it back to us. We had hoped, when we began, to have at least this, the redlined document to you by this town meeting. That's not going to happen. So hopefully, within the next couple of months, you'll get the redlined document.
Myself personally, I'd rather you took more time and got it where you're comfortable than try to rush it out to us and then find everybody just playing chase, trying to get it going.
Well, we've got down into the 20s, and there are 30-some, I think.
Yeah.
And there are some we can't touch, like the bylaw for community preservation. It's a state thing.
Right, but you'll still put it in proper sequence.
Yeah, it needs to be in the proper sequence and all that sort of thing. But we can't start editing or making changes in it. Same thing, I think the, there's a water...
Enterprise accounts.
The rainstorm water, we can't change that. But we can get it into a proper place. But there are some that are written that we can certainly get more, that are local ones, that can be more concise. And you need to see those, too, and see what you think.
And there's some that need to be abolished.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. They get antiquated.
Any other...
I have a question.
Yeah.
Do you have a record of when the last time they had been looked at and added it, or...
I don't think they ever have been.
Just kept getting added.
I think they just got added.
Oh, okay.
We do know that one had, some of them that had several parts in the past, had parts taken out of it. So that the current bylaw is maybe one of four sections. But I don't think they, that they've ever been thoroughly gone over.
Well, thank you so much for getting to it. About time.
We wanted you to know this before we continued, and we wanted to make sure the public knew that this is not being driven by that other report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosenberg. No, come here. You could approach the bench. Go sit down now.
I was just here as an audience member, so I wasn't quite sure why I was being...
It's all friendly here, Mike. But you need a copy for finance committee, and I had a spare copy sitting here, so this way I know you got it.
Okay.
Just like this morning, when I emailed you what I was working on, it was more just to keep your group in it than to say, surprise, here we go. Okay. Man, you look like the teacher was pulling you for detention or something. Okay. Transfer station. I had a very nice meeting with the Board of Health, the town administrator, highway superintendent. Basically, what it's coming down to is the Board of Health's going to work on the environmental side of the transfer station operations. The, Mr. Randall from the Highway Department will do the day-to-day operations of the transfer station. And the new keys will be, the new locks will be installed after the first of the year to bring that back to where we were. And there's always going to be this gray area every now and then where we're gonna overlap with responsibilities, given the fact that under the enterprise account under town meetings way back some 30 years ago, Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen were charged to sort of oversee that. Bob, unless, can you give us something else?
No, no, I'm just...
Randall's okay with that now?
Randall's comfortable with it.
We got a, we had a good conversation and clear lines now on the division of responsibilities.
So who's in charge of the keys?
That'll be the Highway Department, yes.
Okay, all right.
The keys are actually the Board of Health. The Board of Health is the one responsible. Randall will switch the locks, the Board of Health will...
Okay, he's gonna switch the locks. That's what I was thinking.
He's gonna switch the locks. The Board of Health's gonna issue the keys. If somebody has a problem getting in there, they're to contact the Board of Health.
These are the locks are gonna be reinstalled that we already paid for.
That's right. We're not buying another set of locks.
Okay.
This, basically, what's happened is we put some of the older locks back on because we had problems with vendors. Some of them couldn't get the new key because they couldn't find the new key, but they had the old key, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
So after the New Year's, once we get past the holidays, the new locks are going on, everybody's gonna get their new key, and the Board of Health is gonna be responsible for that.
Okay.
And the Board of Health will be dealing with the gas monitoring on the wells, the water monitoring, that kind of stuff. That'll be part of their budget operation through...
I think the important part for Randall is his duties are clear because that was an issue that he had. So if he's clear with it, I'm good with it.
And the way this comes across as the Board of Selectmen are his boss.
And he will, and we will reconvene periodically to see how the arrangement is working.
There's gonna be huddles every now and then. There is a slice of gray in between these two areas where there's overlap. So, and that, that's just the way it is. But all in all, pretty good. We're actually running in the black right now, which we haven't done for a couple of years, so this is...
That's because of that one day we closed, right?
I think that helped a lot.
Yeah.
Okay. Greenway Committee's executive session, Bob?
Yes.
Okay, so that's off of this. Selectmen's goal for FY 2018, this was put on for discussion. I just want to remind the board that we had a meeting on...
October.
October 20th. And at that time, we made a decision as to what we thought our goals were for FY 18, and I have no problem reading them. The first priority is the ambulance service. To revamp the proposal for the ACLS and include cost of fund, a full-time staff level for second shift. That's round about like 5 o'clock to midnight. The second priority was administrative assistance for fire and police to create a line item so that they had some administrative assistance to help them with some of their clerical stuff. The third priority for the selectmen was a grant writer, not to hire somebody in a position, but basically set up a revolving account so that we could take and have some money in there, hire some people or an individual to write grants. If they get a grant, part of the administration of the grant would go back to the revolving account to pay this individual for services. And the last thing was a zero-based budget with a 2% increase for all non-stipend and flat-fee positions. That's keeping with our trend to try to bring their salaries up. And we were gonna go with a flat budget, not knowing where our income levels were gonna be at the time.
Yeah, well, zero-based budget.
Zero-based, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Now, you said for non-stipend and...
For non-stipend, flat-fee positions.
I've never heard those terms, so...
Well...
So we're talking for hourly, non-contract employees?
Non-contract.
Right?
Yeah.
Hourly, non-union, right?
Non-union, hourly-paid, but someone that gets a stipend to do something would not be affected by this.
I don't know that we have stipends or...
I don't think we have any.
Or flat fee, again...
I don't think we have any left.
So I, I think we just want to be clear, we're talking about hourly people, basically.
Well, then you want...
In any contract that reflects, they will get the same as a hourly.
Can I hear a motion to just change this to hourly?
In any contract. So we do have some contracts out there that are tied to whatever the hourlies get, remember?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah. If we, I'll, I'll make a motion that we change the wording so that it reflects accurately, talking about hourly in any contract tied to hourly increases.
Non-union employees.
Right.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Haley, you getting that okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And salaried?
Yes, salary, too. It has to include the salary if we're doing non-union hourly.
Non-union, hourly, and salaried, unless there's a contract, then it goes by the contract.
Right.
Non-contractual, salaried positions.
Right. So I'll amend my motion.
Yeah. Yeah, some are not under contract, are not hourly.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Jackie, you want to amend your second? Did you second it, or Jim?
Yeah, I'll amend the second.
Okay. Okay, so you got that?
Yes, I amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Haley, did you get that modification?
Yep.
Okay. You're so quiet over here. It scares me at times.
That's not a complaint.
No, it's not a complaint, because she can get noisy, too. We all know each other here, just the way it is. It's a small town.
Apparently, we get some TV coverage down south. With Shannon.
So Dee?
Yes, our southern stations are coming in.
Oh, I know, I know. Well, I commented on something, so...
Okay, Dee, request for contract from Copeland and Page.
I made the request. Do not have anything at this point.
Okay. AG, open meeting law complaint, that's executive session also. We have a request from our emergency manager to sign the hazard plan, which is simply a motion to sign it. They've done all the work, and for some reason, I don't see it handily. No, that's not, that's not it. I had it right here. Bob, you got a copy of that hazard plan document?
If you want to, just keep going, I'll, I'll come up with it here if I have it.
I know I gave Velda a copy of it, but I know I had a copy here also.
Here it is. I have a copy.
Good. I know Mr. Snyder's watching, bated breath that we vote on this tonight. He is. Very good. This is certificate adoption, Town of Southampton Board of Selectmen, a resolution adopting the Southampton natural hazard mitigation plans. Whereas the Town of Southampton established a committee to update the Southampton natural hazard mitigation plan, and whereas several public planning meetings were held between July 2015 and July 2016 regarding update, review, the Southampton natural plan update, so on and so forth. Now, therefore, it be resolved, Southampton Board of Selectmen adopt the Southampton natural hazard mitigation plan updated. Do I hear a motion to accept that plan update?
I'm waiting for these guys.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
There you go.
Discussion?
Yes, what?
This basically makes us eligible for...
It's just an update.
That's all.
Yeah, that's good.
I understand.
Got it.
Makes sense.
I just go through this abuse just for the sake of going through the abuse?
We're just trying to give the left side of the table a chance.
We are, you are, you know. No, I mean, I would say enough. I thought Jim should get involved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Unanimous? Mr. Snyder was very concerned that we were not gonna approve that tonight. So please sign that so we can make sure it gets to him or to the proper person. sign that so we can make sure it gets to him or to the proper person. I guess we're into new business. Payrolls? That's tomorrow? No.
Yeah, I have, I have some, yes. Also, there's, there, okay.
The licenses are later, I don't know. You ready? There you go.
I got my request.
John?
You're welcome.
You have to sign this one because...
Okay.
...call his nieces a...
Relative.
On this one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I have the ones to sign.
Okay. Do you have all of them that we need to vote on?
I have nothing.
This one I can read, but is there any other ones we need to read?
Yeah, why don't you just give John all of them, he'll just read them into the record, that's all.
Thank you.
Well, you jumped at it, I figured I'd give you the opportunity.
You want that?
Yes.
Yeah, he, he wants to get everything to you, he doesn't want to lose anything.
Yeah, well, if I get it back to him, then it gets to the office, and it ends up here, then I can...
So John can read these, I don't have to read these?
No, no, he's still in the payroll.
Oh, okay, so I still...
Yeah.
Seventeen, twenty.
Oh, okay, yeah, leave, leave him do that.
Having too much fun here.
Sorry, end of the year.
I can tell.
Guess you have to wait.
Too much partying, yeah. Bob, I must tell you, I was impressed on how you put that warrant together as fast as you did. That was very nice.
Looks good.
Thank you. I was just looking at this improvements to the sign.
Yes.
And we were talking today about a two-faced sign.
Yes.
Perpendicular, so you could see it, Town Hall, Town Hall, yes. Last night I was reading something from Lincoln, he said, "I would call it two-faced." He said, "If I were two-faced, you think I'd be wearing this one?"
I know, yeah.
Okay, this, this appears all to be one warrant, Bob.
What's that?
This is all one warrant.
Right.
Okay, so, warrant is W-17-25, Treasury warrant for $345,551. I'll make a motion, we accept it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done deal, unanimous.
I usually have a separate one.
All right, next topic is the sign at Town Hall. It was brought to my attention by some individuals that the sign that's in front of Town Hall, one, is deteriorating. Two, because it's parallel to the road, nobody sees it. They're busy watching the road, and they can't, through their peripheral vision, see that it actually says Town Hall. Discussions have been, you know, should we put another sign up? If so, what would you, we do with it? You know, what would it look like, that kind of stuff? So I basically put into the warrants, three grand to take and replace that sign, but I didn't get a chance to run this by you guys, because this was all just coming together. So I guess my first question is, do you want to replace that sign?
Can we spin it?
You want to make it two-faced sideways? Yes, the short answer is yes. The long answer is, we, then it's only going to have one face on one side, it still has to be redone.
Right.
And if you're getting to that point of redoing it, you might as well just put up a new sign.
Okay.
You know, I mean, they're not going to say anything.
I mean, I like the idea, it's just three grand in the budget that we don't have.
I understand, and that's why we're looking at it and sort of like, okay, I'll ask the question.
CPC money, Virginia? No.
It's not, uh... Not even close.
It doesn't fit any of the categories. You can't just use a prison.
Michael Rosenberg, 144 East Street, just playing devil's advocate, when I drive down East Street towards the city or Town Hall, how will I know it's the Town Hall? There's no sign facing my street.
We need a, we need a three-sided sign.
Or leave that one there.
Well, how bad is it, falling apart?
That's all in the eyes of the beholder.
No, I mean, like, you said it, it, it needs, there's something wrong with it. There's something wrong with it, is it falling apart, you said?
It's starting to deteriorate. It needs, it needs space work, okay?
Okay.
But, you know, this is brought to me, as chair, I bring it to the committee, it's up to the board to decide if they want to go forward with this, you know? It's the residents asking me to put this forward.
So you have three bids that have...
I have no bids at this point, that was just an estimate.
Right, one estimate.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and the reality of it is, you know, if we were going to do something like this, I would not want it to be just somebody doing it. I'd like to see a few people get involved in it.
Yeah, it sounds like a public project, maybe Randall might want to be involved with in the spring or something.
Yeah.
I'd ask him.
I mean, if you look, the police department put themselves up a sign by the police station, it looks nice, and it basically tells people where the police station is.
I bet we could get a local sign company to donate some time to do that.
So do I hear a motion to strike the article?
I'll make the motion.
To strike it?
Strike it. I, I don't think $3,000 right now in the crunch.
No, you know what? I, I would like to investigate or put out requests for other bids, see if we can get it down, lower it, and then put it on the warrant, to see what people think.
Well, we can put it on the warrant, it's already on the warrant.
No, I mean, for that amount of money, yeah, maybe, maybe that's too much money for people to consider. Maybe it would go through if it was less than the money.
But, but, when you put it on the warrant, and say it's $3,000?
Yeah.
You can go to town meeting and ask for $1,000. You just can't ask for four.
Right, right, right. Well, I mean, if it's going to be more convenient for people, I would leave it, I would leave it up to the town, townspeople, to see what they think.
So you're saying strike it, you're saying keep it on?
Yeah.
The all-important vote?
The all-important vote, huh?
Well, I think if we leave it on for now, we can always table it. It gives us a little time to maybe get a quote, and maybe we can get it done for $1,000 or $1,500, and then put it in front of the people.
Right, and see what they say.
Well, if you, if you leave it on the art, on the warrant, you, you can table it at town meeting.
Right.
Right, you're done.
Michael Rosenberg, 144 East Street.
I mean, you got a motion, so you got to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
You got to do something with it? I got a motion, but no second. Okay, so then, it's cleared. Yeah. Okay.
So my one question, right, so if you'd be looking to put this as an article on the warrant, I mean, we're taking items that are deferred maintenance items and putting them up for, you know, free cash transfers. I mean, shouldn't we try to be building a lot of these into the budget, or, you know, we see it's, it's deteriorating today, so for next year, we plan to repair it through the budget cycle? I mean, we, we go down the rabbit hole of pulling from free cash to do our INM work, our, you know, our maintenance work that we should be budgeting at some point. You're going to need to use free cash for some items, but, you know, we should, if we're talking $1,000, $1,500 for a sign, we should, we should try to plan that in.
I don't have a problem with Michael's suggestion, just put in the budget for next year, and see where the budget goes.
As long as we don't lose track for the year after. It's one of those, you should go in and come out again the next year.
Right, so maybe it's a separate line for the year that we, you know, Town Hall signage, something along those lines is a one-time-year thing. I mean, you're going to know from '18 to '19, Town Hall signage fell off, we have a new sign, we're good, so. Makes sense, we're probably not going to be doing it in the wintertime anyway, so maybe put it in a line item in the annual town meeting.
All right, so a motion to withdraw this warrant article?
I'll make that motion.
I hear a second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That went full circle.
I would say no. I, I just feel like it's, it's just going to get lost, and I'd hate to have it just fall off, if it's got, it's just going to look bad if it's just laying there.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, we have Jackie form a committee to see if they can get donations. I bet you could.
I bet you could, actually. All right, I, I agree that we're going to put it, try to put it in our budget, so we're withdrawing the article, and Jackie, if you want to try to get something going, hey, why not?
Yeah.
Thank you, Michael. Request for national land realty to lease land for a solar application.
Yeah, where is that?
Yeah, I saw the maps and stuff, but I couldn't...
I was trying to identify, I couldn't, I looked at the map.
I couldn't either.
But I didn't go look up the map and page, so. I had made a request since we went to the agenda with this, that the, the company proposing this send a representative. They said they would, and then, what was it, Friday, I got an email saying they can't, so if you would like to just put this aside, uh...
Yeah, let's just table it.
I can find a time for them to send a representative to...
And they were talking about, what, $2,000 an acre?
Yeah.
Per, you know, per year, for 20-year lease, but I couldn't recognize the parcel they showed with the aerial photo.
I kept thinking it was near the Manhattan River, but I still couldn't...
There's some houses around it.
Yeah. All right, motion to table this for now?
Yeah, I would say.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, request for proclamation on school choice. I move, I let this go on for discussion, but I really don't think we should be taking a position on this.
I agree, I don't think we should take a position.
Motion to pass over?
Do we need to make a motion?
No, we can...
I think we just let it sit.
Okay.
Proclamation.
If memory serves, it was basically that we were endorsing the fact that the, the school choice program, and there's like a week that we've recognized them in that. Yeah. We're, we're in, in my mind, the select board's not in that position to do that. If it was a school committee or something like that, that would be different, but us, we're, we're so far removed from that that... Town meeting articles, well, we've all have them, we have to look them over. Unanticipated business? Nothing. Personnel change forms? I'm assuming that this matches the paperwork.
I got some this afternoon, yes. Oh, you have them, yes.
Hi, okay. I guess I'd, it'd be safer for me to read the actual documents, I guess. Counsel on aging van driver, resignation of Constance Barton. That was approved by both Finance and Personnel Board.
Resignation in there? It's not on the list.
We don't see it on here.
I don't see it on the list.
Is that a finalized list?
We did that, I thought, last meeting.
That's what I thought.
So that's a PRF to post position. So we've signed the PCF for resignation, this is for the posting of the...
This is the posting.
It says no PRF, so I mean, got it.
I know, that's, that's why I grabbed the packet rather than tried to trust the agenda.
So can we approve them, if it says none? I just want to make sure we follow the protocol.
Well, I put a line item on this of unanticipated business to blanket all this kind of loose ends that have seemed to develop.
Okay.
And they need to post their positions, so...
So I'll read it in, I guess, I'm fine.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous. Probationary firefighter, Jordan Duchette.
Is that a resignation?
Resignation. That's been approved by everybody but us.
Do you want to read the rest of them, and do them all at once?
Sure. Probationary firefighter, third rider, Brandon Kavanaugh, won't impact the budget. Looks like he's a new hire.
You have him as third rider?
Third rider.
I don't have that here, but...
I don't have that here either.
We got certified NFPA, I've got Timothy Rowan as third rider.
And Rachel.
I got Timothy Rowan here too, and I got Rachel.
Rachel Janik.
Yeah.
But we don't have Brandon Kavanaugh as third rider.
Well, they just came in to Bob, and they have the signatures on them from Personnel, Finance, so, and the accountant, so the only one that's missing is us.
Yeah, it says increase in hourly rate emergency and increase in hourly rate temporary. But if it went through everybody?
It's gone through everybody, that's, that's the reason why.
So which one is it? Is it temporary, or is it just increasing rate?
Uh...
It has two here.
Well, the one I have here for Brandon, it just says third rider, I guess a change in salary, see below, a new salary rate for his position. Old rate was 10.71, new rate's $15. New title, certify NFPA firefighter, one and two.
Okay, so, let me ask you a question. If he's a third rider, he's still learning the process, is that right?
That's my assumption, yeah.
So he's going from 10-something to 15-something?
That's what it's saying.
But it doesn't...
But it went through Finance?
So there is a... One of these packets.
That's the one I'm looking at.
In this packet is the payroll wage determination sheet, and for EMTB or firefighter, basically less than two years, starting raise $15. So once they go through their firefighting...
Fire school, he just completed the school, it says here.
Yeah.
So that's helpful, I mean, if you want to rip it out, so you just, we need preference at a rate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So that's...
That's him.
All right, it's just written there.
Okay, so that's Brandon.
That's all.
And, uh, next one is Cartra Zachary, uh, old rate to new rate, old rate was 19...
Zachary Coreta?
Yeah.
Okay.
Lieutenant, he's a lieutenant now, so that's why he went up.
Okay.
Uh, and then we got Timothy Rowan, and yeah, he's another one that just passed, that's where certifications attached to it. And Rachel, Jen Capello?
Janik Capello?
Capello, okay. And that's another one that went to the new rate. I don't know why I got two copies of the same thing.
Well, there was a temporary and emergency.
Oh. And the last one, Michael Taylor.
Yep.
Lim Goos.
Michael Taylor Lamoges?
And, uh, yeah.
New hire.
That's a new hire.
Temporary, okay.
Yeah. Motion to accept?
So moved.
All, second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, done. Licenses and permits, liquor licenses.
Excuse me, before you get to that, Dave's Auto Sales is now ready to go, they have, we have received a surety bond and a $150 check.
All right, and we've already signed the documentation on that.
Right.
So that'll come off the.
Right.
Agenda.
It'll come off, yes, okay.
Okay, good. All right, so move Jackie into liquor licenses, she seems to be versed in that.
Yikes. Okay. These are licenses that have been approved, and they've all paid their fees, and so we have Beshistas Orchards, Big Y World Class Market, Camp John's Association, Country Liquor Store, Cumberland Farms, Dunkin' Donuts, Johnny Diamonds, Opa Opa Steakhouse and Brewery, Pizano's Restaurant and Pub, Pure Food Market, Sheldon's Ice Cream, Smitty Package Store, Smitty's, pardon me, Southampton Beer and Wine, Southampton Country Club, Subway, The Tin Can Alley Lounge, and Westlake Gourmet.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second, yeah.
Discussion?
As long as everything, everything's all set, right, Bob?
Everything's fine.
Okay.
I hear a motion to pass, no, I hear a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous, well, all right. Do you have the common vicular license?
No, common vics will be, common vics will be coming in, complete at least, we have partially complete, I don't think they were included, we have until the end of January for those anyways.
So next meeting?
We've got time for next meeting, okay.
Okay.
Payroll we just did, bill warrants not until tomorrow, we have a disclosure by a non-elected municipal employee of financial interest and determined by appointment authority as required under MGLC 2068A, section 19, Randall Kemp, this is pretty much a standard form. Yeah, I saw that.
Yep.
Motion to approve?
Hold on, that's right here.
Yeah, this is regarding his wife who's an attorney representing Dave Garska on 8 David Street.
Tension and curb cut in open public way, I should have been working.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, we accept this.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have a point of order.
I don't know, I was looking myself.
On the personnel form for lieutenant, right on, Zachary, I, let me make sure. I have two forms for him, one is signed by finance and personnel and the fire chief, the other one is signed by personnel but not finance, and both are approved by accounting.
Are they for the same thing?
That's what I'm trying to figure out, one's the emergency and one's part-time. The emergency is approved by everybody, the part-time is not.
What it has listed here is just a increase in pay, there's only one here.
Right, well, the emergency one I have no problem signing, that everyone else has done that, and that's fine.
Why are we having an emergency, he's getting a promotion to lieutenant?
That's what I don't understand, and I don't have a signature from finance on it.
Yeah, I, I can't see why an emergency one is needed, he's already in the fire department, he's just getting a promotion, so that's probably why they didn't sign it.
But they signed the emergency one.
Yeah, they signed the emergency room and not the permanent, it's back.
Backwards?
It's backwards.
Oh.
The finance committee approved the emergency.
Okay.
Which, he's a firefighter anyways.
Yeah.
But they didn't approve the part-time.
But the PQB did?
Yeah.
And the fire chief did?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's what we voted on, basically.
And the town accountant did too.
Okay.
So we should send that second one back, have them verify it?
So technically, should we rescind the vote?
Well, I would move the vote to approve the emergency, and because everyone signed it anyways, just keep that so he's got.
Move the vote to approve the emergency?
Right.
Well.
Not to remove it, no, to leave that vote in place, but remove the vote on the pay increase.
What I'm saying is, we didn't approve the emergency, as far as I know, we just approved the increase, the pay increase, that's all that was on the agenda, so the emergency one's not approved.
All right, well, then I think we should have a motion to approve the emergency one.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, it's not an emergency, what's the emergency, to hire him?
Let me ask it, I'm just looking at this.
What does it say? Excuse me.
Is the pay the same on both of those?
Well, see, it says emergency here, then it says the reason is change in salary, wage, or appointment, you don't need an emergency PCF to do that.
No, that's why I pulled it out.
I'm wondering if the chief checked off the wrong box, instead of emergency, it should have been, you know, just full-time.
Do you want to take a look at this, see if you can gleam out of it what we're going at?
And the second one, excuse me, is part-time change in salary and wages, which is what we approved.
Correct.
This one right here, I don't know why we have an emergency, it says basically the same thing, except the box is checked off differently.
It appears that finance approved the temporary but not the.
Where is this meeting tonight at 5:20?
Okay, yeah. I don't blame you.
That's the story of our life.
So we didn't approve, we did not approve the emergency one, so that's off the table. We approved the other one, but now we're finding out the finance committee didn't sign it.
Right.
So, I hate to do it this way, but let's amend the motion pending approval by the finance committee, seeing that there's a mess-up in the paperwork.
So then let me ask you this, if finance signs it.
Then it's good to go.
Then I can sign it even if we don't have a board meeting?
Yes, that's what.
No, we're approving it pending finances, just a, a clear error.
Yeah, you can sign it.
Okay.
Or we can sign it now pending getting a finance committee.
Right.
It appears to be a clear error, but we're not 100% positive, so we could have.
Yeah.
Correct.
I'll get it fixed up tomorrow.
Mike left a little too early.
I know, and he was doing so well, too, you know? All right, Board of Selectmen's calendar, January 5th is our next meeting, it's basically to sign the warrants for the town to get town meeting going, and then our regular meeting is going to be January 10th.
10th.
10th, so that'll be. Yep, and now we're going to move into executive session, so I'm going to need a roll call vote under Master General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, number seven, open meeting law discussion, three, four, six, one, two, gee, just about everything. Roll call vote?
Did you say number four also?
Yeah, he did, one, two, three, four.
Okay.
CSI.
Kineki, aye.
Martin, aye.
Lebri, aye.
Okay, we're not going to return an open.